Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Thursday, June 17th, 2021 meeting of the Chappa' Central School District Board of Education. The board has been an executive session discussing contract negotiations, litigation, and labs of state fees. May I have a motion to recontinue the public session? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please rise for Chief of Legion, President Holly Hong. United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for the God, the physical, liberty, justice, and So I want to start off this evening with a farewell, a sad farewell. And I want to recognize Holly Hong for her service to the Board of Education and for our school district. I know, Holly, that this is your last regularly scheduled board meeting. Of course, you know, we may not let you off so easily. We may add something just for you, for all time's sake. But I just want to say how much we are, I enjoy working with you and how much I appreciate the dedication and the diligence that you've shown to your work for the school district. And it was always clear that you cared about the kids and put them first. You always have asked really good and incisive questions. And I want to say what a pleasure it's been to back to know you better and to work with you. And I will miss that. And I just, I wish we stayed longer. Sorry, I just want to say thank you, and I want to give the opportunity for anyone else, if they'd like to say a few words.
Just to echo what Vicky said, it's really been a pleasure, Holly. Your commitment to public service is so honorable and is so evident. We really appreciate all that you've done and you're so dedicated. It's been a joy to work with you these last three years. I know your public service is not ending here at this table, but it's been a pleasure to sit at it with you. So thank you for all your hard work. You really, really care about every aspect of this district and all that it warrants. So thank you very much, and I wish you all the best.
So, again, it's been a pleasure to serve you for years, or three years. You seem to be there sometimes, but you used to sit in front of the audience in the academic commons as a member of the PTA and CEO of ConAmeri, a very interesting company, a brilliant new branch of board, and it's been a pleasure to serve with you. And beyond that, it's more the dedication you've shown to the children and the taxpayers who are coming in, that everything with the right intent to put the children first. And that's what I think our job is, to make sure the district runs well, that's Christine and the administrative job, but the governance oversight, to make sure that the community and the children of the community are getting the best education that we can provide for them. And I know that was always one of the top things on your list, to look at the children first. So, thank you.
You were the only person I knew on the board before running for the board. Knowing you were on the board actually made me more comfortable pursuing it because at least I knew I was one person up board and turned around and liked everybody, but I didn't know anybody else when I decided to run. And I love working with you. And I've always been so impressed by your incredible attention to detail and just really willing to look at everything with the fine tooth comb. And I'm sorry we won't be working together anymore, but I'm glad we're neighbors and we'll be able to keep walking together. So, thank you.
And Holly, just on behalf of the administration and the staff of our school district, I just want to thank you through the past three years. It takes a lot of time and energy and commitment to be a part of this Board of Education. And we have navigated some really challenging situations to work together. And your voice in those conversations have made us better. And so, on behalf of all of us on the other side of the table, I'd like to thank you so deeply for the work that you've done on behalf of the children here and the support that you've given the staff. So, thank you.
And so, we have a few things to give you. First of all, we have a certificate of recognition from the Westchester Department of School Boards Association. And I'm so happy to be giving this to you because I'm still on their board. So this is coming from me too. It says, "On behalf of Chappa' Central School District, the Westchester School Boards Association is honored to recognize Holly Hong, who supported quality education, commitment to educational excellence, and dedicated leadership has enhanced the quality of education for all the students in the district." And it's dated June 1, 2021. And it's signed by me, that's President of the Board of Education, and then signed by Karen Milonge, who's the Executive Director of Westchester School Boards Association. So I am pleased and honored to give you this certificate. So congratulations for that. And also, we do have a little gift for you from the board and the administration. You can leave this up. Hang on, sorry. And it goes to soft mystery. It's a face and it's engraved, and it says, "Holly Hong, Chappa' Central School District, Board of Education, 2018 to 2021." So enjoy that and hope you put some light flowers in it. It will serve as a memento for all our work together. But I know you'll still be around and I'm sure that you'll continue to be involved in schools in some way or another. All right, thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Holly. I'll take my mask off. Thank you all for all the kind words and the party gift. Please don't hate yourselves, you're not going to get rid of me on this. So we are just maybe sitting on the other side of this table. It's been nothing less than an honor and a privilege to serve with you all. And I have learned so much from each and every one of you, including Ellen, who I'm still getting to know. But you guys all have such a dedication to the children and to the constituency. I would take all these lessons with me and keep them forever. And like I said, I'll be sitting, hopefully in the academic commons again in the fall. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Holly. Seems almost a shame to go on business as usual, but we will. Also, I'll hand over Christine for the superintendent's board.
All right, so we're going to begin with the strategic plan update because we actually have our presenters tonight. We're the Equity RFP, so if you could pull that presentation up.
All right, so as a Board of Education, it's a year we had engaged in strategic planning process. Holly first arrived here and we identified our target areas for the district. Three were noted as areas that we needed to improve. Two were identified through our work and our personal instruction and how long. And then one was added this year in response to some work that we realized that we needed to engage in immediately around equity. So we're going to go through each of our six strategic priorities and just highlight for you some of the work that's been taking place over the course of this year. So we're going to start with the Lord using instructional space to amplify. So much of what we're sharing with you tonight is not new information for your consideration. A lot of our work this year focused on using all of our spaces to support instruction in the pandemic, as well as transitioning into some major spaces that are opening in the middle of the school year. So if you look at what our professional learning focused on, you'll see much of it was opening Lower L, preparing for the STEAM Lab, preparing for the Sustainability Center that'll be opening next year, preparing to support new spaces where we'll be integrating additional technologies that are more sophisticated for our students to use, and then how to support our teachers in spaces that were not traditional because we needed to maximize social distancing. So in the elementary school, we leveraged our technologies to move around the buildings in ways that we never had before. And you'll see that we used our flexible predator in the gym, in the cafeteria, in the Global Learning Centers in a way that we could have never anticipated. And we also leveraged the outdoors for instruction. At the middle level, we leveraged all of our large spaces for English and math class. We also began to support a specific curriculum and grade card to have our students engaged in this STEAM Center. We anticipate being able to expand it next year because we won't be able to use that space in the same way for English and math courses. And then we are looking to open a video production studio in Southern Bridges and enhance some of our outdoor classes at the middle level as well. And then in the high school, as I mentioned earlier, we opened Lower L in the beginning of the, in the middle of the school year. We had to support center. Oh, I'm sorry. I might move it on my slide. Okay, and then at the, and as our students were in the hybrid model for most of the school year, we had to leverage technology in order to support students learning at home and in our classrooms at the same time. We are in the process of building our studio in the Global Learning Center. The STEAM Lab should be opening in the middle of the summer for students come fall. We had leveraged our global learning space in the way that we initially anticipated it to have a podcasting studio in there. And then, of course, we're working on building a sustainability research center. Right, so Adam?
So district-wide assessment practices priority is really all about making sure that we know thoroughly what students know and are able to do. And a lot of that goes and connects to our personalized learning initiatives. So Ellen, your team did some work in special education that you're going to share personally.
So in our special education, we've been working with our special education teachers to train them on the administration of the We Are the Wood Path Johnson Assessments. We use these assessments when we're initially evaluating a student who's been referred to the committee on special education. And again, when we reevaluate those students every couple of years, we want to make sure that we give our teachers the professional development that they need and deserve so that they can administer those assessments effectively. And also, when we onboard new teachers, they're often in need of some training in that area as well.
So if we start at the elementary level, you can see that we expanded maps. We brought maps into the district last year. We expanded it this year so we had a better sense of any federal learning law and/or progress that's being formulated. So we expanded that to grades from one to four. And you can also see on the second bullet there, some of the programs that were really leaned on to help us through the pandemic, which were especially helpful when we were completely remote in the first season. So we kind of relied on it this year. So you can see those at the elementary level, they're busy. At the middle school, we also relied on the MAPS assessment integrated by group A to give that assessment free time a year. So we have normed data. We also relied more heavily on Canvas as a student management system at the middle school. And at high school, the pandemic, the cancellation of some of the region's exams was actually an interesting shift for us because we were able to start to think about some of the shifting some of the traditional finals to projects, portfolios, presentations, things like that. So the pandemic disruption actually helped us with our assessment priority to change the things that really needed to be changed.
So in terms of our KU call, such a local learning program on the morning, we continue our partnership with Yale and support teams in engaging in that work at the building levels as we continue to grow that program. And we made sure that we had a comprehensive approach KU A. I'll talk about in a minute. We're soon for engagement, how we will work on a regular basis in our courses. And then we established several learning teams throughout the district, one of which was at the high school level in responses to student climate survey, where Andrew led a group of stakeholders to focus on student belonging because that was one of the areas that we noted that there needed to be considerable improvement. And then, of course, we've had numerous book studies and professional development around identity mapping and theory of classroom culture. So just so, just for an overview of each person we're building, you'll see that we, each morning, our teachers engage in a core team. And this is at the middle level as well. Students would identify their feeling on the mood meter. They would engage their mind in a circle. They would participate in reviewing classroom charters. And then they would interact in classroom community circles. We also had numerous tests to help support the equity work that overlapped with their SEL instruction. And we also continued the safety standards, kids working, which was an initiative that was put in place prior to March. At the middle level, you'll see that students continue to use those core morning routines during advisory and we think that that contributed to building those nice small communities on classroom activity classes. We also had learning teams at the middle level engaged in real specific work around SEL and ROR. And then we leveraged that time in the schedule in the morning and in the afternoon to support SEL workers, specifically around the stuff in using that community circle during both advisory and class time as necessary. And then at the high school level, we wanted to make sure that all the students were connected with at the beginning of the year. So we had guided circles led by school counselors who all students in September. And then, of course, as I mentioned previously, we did significant work around student survey and making adjustments that really responded to some of the areas that we were concerned about. And then professional learning was facilitated to help students and teachers participate in identity mapping curricular exercises.
So when it comes to the academic program alignment, this priority is really about curriculum. It's about what we teach and when we teach it. It's really important in a school district like ours that has three elementary schools, two middle schools, and a high school, that we have a really thoughtful and well-articulated curriculum. So the students can track through that system without jacks and or redundancies in their learning. So at the elementary school, our focus has been on the implementation of phonics first in K-12. So it's an important young camp based phonics program in K through second grade that we have in place and then fidelity towards their way, which they implemented in grades three and four. Next year, we're bringing in handwriting without tears, quitting the primary grades to kind of modify and improve our handwriting program for the youngest kids. And this year, we implemented a digital math and focus program in K-5. Same math program, but the digital version, the current updated version. Also been focusing on K-4, next generation science standards. We've rolled that in, it's taken us a few years, but next year, the fourth grade training will be placed. So we should be, by the end of next year, we'll have updated science standards and A-words that are aligned with the national standards in science. And then here with more about social studies, TCI curriculum, we'll present that on the future. I'd love to hear some more about that upcoming. In middle school, we're piloting a two-person team in fifth grade. We've been thinking a lot about the transition that students make from the middle school, oh, sorry, from the elementary school to the middle school and what may ease that transition. So we're focused on a two-person team with interdisciplinary humanities curriculum and interdisciplinary STEAM curriculum. So the students will get kind of level block, and we're social studying a level block of math, science, and then navigate fewer transitions with the academic teachers. We're going to pilot that with a two-person team in both middle schools. Again, you'll hear a little bit more about TCI at a future meeting. We're doing some next generation science standard work at the middle school. And you'll see our focus on eighth grade math. So we're actually taking some modifications for seventh grade math curriculum. And then eighth grade will be algebra for all students. And you can see at the high school, some of the highlights are some alignment in ninth grade English. We've brought in quite a few new partners. You guys heard from me about that through the course of the year. Social studies were aligned nine through 12 in traditionally courses. We have some exciting work on language alignment, as well as next generation science standards in biology and percents in ninth and 10th grade. And then you can see we've had to make some updates to our ninth grade math program because of the change of all students taking out for it.
Okay, and then Adam?
So the pandemic, as you all are really well aware, has accelerated our use of technology. Technology for years was a way for us to enhance the instructional experience for students, but really became such a core of the academic program. That kind of investment in technology and also professional development, it evident as we transitioned to the transition of the preseason was the professional development team actually spends much less time now doing professional development on technology because it becomes a department system. So we're focused much more on the instruction and less on the technology tools. You can see some of the highlights here. At the elementary level, K-4 is completely integrated into the instructional program now with the iPads. We've been able to personalize learning for our youngest learners. Things like gamboard, Apex tablet, work their way, et cetera, that new electronic math program. So I know our parents are well aware of that, our community has seen that. It's a unique part of our program now. At the middle level, you can see we're still working on our STEAM centers. We actually had to use them as classroom spaces because of the pandemic situation. We are still trying to explore the capacity of those centers. So you can see some of the 3D printing on the right side with bubble wand. So we're excited to kind of dive into those STEAM centers next year fully. But this year, we've been doing our best to use them in two different ways, in instructional space and also in a STEAM center as they've been designed. And again, you can see the campus learning center there that we've been leaning on. At the high school, you can see some of the high school students work there on the right side of how they've integrated technology and mathematics. We've installed quite a few Thank You boards, which is a new version. Smart board was the old system that we were using. We've been transitioning over to Ben Q boards, really sophisticated interactive board that we've been installing throughout the district primarily at the middle school.
And Tony and I present our capital affirming and cultural sponsored learning in our G6, Sparkway area. So as you know, we are committed to closing the gap between our style values and our current reality. And we have been engaging in significant amount of work over the course of the past school year in order to make sure that we are creating environments that also make school welcome to learn and appreciate it and who they are as people. And we have been committed to engaging in this work around our framework since the start of the school year. And so what we just wanted to share with you was just a broad overview of some of the work that we have there, as well as share with you how we're going to engage in this work moving forward. So I think now we convened a strategic planning committee and steering committee, and we decided in the middle of the school year to make this a priority area for the district, which is in line with how we focused all of our work since the strategic planning process had commenced, and we felt that this was appropriate, path that the Board of Education agreed. And so, one of the things that we felt was important, which we accomplished, is that we changed our curriculum to reflect some of the concerns that we received from the community in June. And we also developed a quarterly reporting system to share with the community in the Board of Education incidents related to speech, speech discrimination, and bias. And so today, the last report of the year, because this is the fourth quarter report, so you can see that I'm sharing with you that we have two incidents at the middle level around speech, third quarter. So this is the reporting system that we've been using all year. And we made a slight adjustment based on work feedback around November. And then we also, we adjusted in the, in December, one of our, we added Civil Rights Act to our policies. So the policy committee recommended that to board. That was an adjustment that we had made in the middle of the school year. And then also, through Holly and Vicky's leadership, we developed the CARES committee. And the CARES committee is a group of stakeholders, including students and parents. And we developed three focus areas that we would be working on collectively as a committee around the feedback that we receive and also in reviewing the student quality survey. And one of the things that we felt was important at the CARES committee is that we have a shared language. And at the same time, we were discussing the need for developing a shared language, the New York State Department of Education pushed out an equity framework for public schools. And so we decided at the CARE committee that these would be the definitions that we would be using as we work together moving forward with our equity work. And so now, like Tony, is to talk through some of the work that's been done over the course of this school year. Tony?
Thank you, Christine. And I just want to take a moment to thank the board for your support this year. Some of the most fulfilling work that I had the chance to do over the last 18 months has been work around equity and social justice and inclusion. And that's involved everything from developing a teacher leadership team by BIPOC faculty staff who are leading our equity fellowship, to the introduction of our Director of Equity who's been on this, who eventually became a fellow market. And so he joined us being a member. He's done so many things, he's helped us facilitate the leadership team and the PD team. He's been a part of our Chad Equity Pride Fellowship, he's helped with the Student Pride Equity Fellowship. And one of the highlights of the year was when we had our BIPOC faculty gathering event a few weeks ago. Another that was possible about all of us, of course, like Tony's, he's been a part of it. So some of the other highlights, as I mentioned, we launched the Chad Equity Pride Fellowship, which is made up of 25 students who probably can't help continuing and actively involved. We just wrapped up our last session for this year. We'll be having a couple of activities over the summer. That actually led to the creation of the Chad Equity Pride Student Fellowship for students who really were able to participate in a similar way to what our teacher program is for the teachers here at the high school, Tim K., Isabel, Preya have been critical in launching that, and that, Preya, Kay, and Allison, but also Jen, and Jen Thompson, sorry, and Max, Torrell, Alan have all been critical in the leadership of this work here in the district. So excited about that continuing. We also launched a BIPOC PD circle. We talked about that as a learning team for BIPOC faculty. That continued throughout this year and is really valuable to some of the staff that I've worked with here with teachers. That also leads to the launch of the White Alliance Equity Circle that under Ryan and Ken Thompson are facilitating. Really puts the conversation for our colleagues, by identifying colleagues who want to further their learning in this area. That was not something we planned, but it came out of many conversations this year. And then, just to kind of shift the focus a little bit to our kids and to our families, I mentioned that BIPOC faculty gathering that happened at FEL and Tim K. and Philip did such an amazing job facilitating that night and just bringing families together in a really comfortable, relaxing, positive way. We also had our first ever mini daylight. So we had mini daylights here, it was a huge success. The kids wanted to do more, went to that nature, so we launched a mini daylight in February. And then just about two weeks ago, we had our mini day in April, first time. It touched all our kids, grade five through 12. And we've got also, and I just think everyone's so much more excited about our kids, like really centering and finding student voice. So, yeah. Adam touched on this earlier, some of the shared student experiences, that's something we heard about from our kids when we talked to the student equity fellow. One of the things that they really appreciated was that they saw differences in some of the texts that were available in their classrooms. And they helped us share experiences, like particularly the same experience that ninth graders had, even though they weren't all in the same class. The fact that they all read the same book gave them an opportunity to speak on some of the themes, concepts, and ideas. So these are just some of the books that have been integrated into our classroom by ways to diversify perspective. We also had a number of speakers and facilitators of professional learning from Dr. Moore, Dr. Thinkit, Matthew K., ValuTru, Darrell, Karen, and Anna Rivera, and I think we're doing this, they've been critical from the Sunday here through now. These are just some of the people that have influenced and shaped our thinking. It was really cool to hear from their research and their understanding and helping us in our work. Lastly, not least, we had our RFP process. And so I'm excited to share that after a rigorous process, that had to go out twice because we weren't necessarily happy with the original process. We used some data samples, we went through all the processes to lead through those. We identified four organizations that we felt were viable. We had three coming and we do attach with us, some in the Department of Education leadership team. And after a long process, we identified one organization. And we are excited to recommend them tonight to the Board of Education. It's a good site, education group. And we have Dr. Michael and Pia Johnson. Well, that's our names, correct. They're going to be attending with us momentarily. Well, they're there, I got Pia and Mike. Okay, so just quickly so you know where they are. Pia Johnson is a partner in the school district to provide permanent support for educators. partner in the school district to provide argumentative support for educators, effectiveness, leadership initiative, and instructional practice, which she began her career as a eighth grade daily teacher in Louisiana. We also have that partner, Michael Moody, who's up there on the screen as well. And Michael is the founder of Insight Education Group. He began his career as a middle school teacher in Oakland, California. And over the course of his career, he served as a middle school teacher, third or fifth grade teacher, instructional coach, school leader, and chief academic officer for DC Public Schools. So thank you, Michael and Kia, for being with us tonight, because I'm excited to officially launch our partnership.
Can you put that on the big, bigger screen?
I do have that.
Dave, can you unshare my presentation?
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, Tony, and thank you so much to all of the board members. We are super excited to be here with you this evening. As Tony shared a little bit about our backgrounds, I am Kia Johnson. I'm a project coach with Insight Education Group, and I'm going to be the partnership manager here in Chappaqua. And I'm also joined by our co-founder, Michael Moody. An additional background I'd like to share is that I have 16 years of experience in public ed and was actually the executive director of a network of public schools in Delaware before transitioning to Insight. And I have a master's degree in school leadership from Columbia and also my certificate in diversity, equity, inclusion from Cornell. And so as an educator, a passionate educator, I've grown to be really, really passionate about the way that we advance equity in schools and transform experiences and outcomes for all students. And so I'm really, really thrilled to be engaging with you all as a partner. At a high level, we just wanted to share with you all that our approach to advancing equity in Chappaqua will be really anchored in the Insight Education Equity Framework, which was designed to provide a consistent focus on the primary levers of change by consistently examining the structures, systems, and resources that exist within Chappaqua, the culture and community, racial equity in your educated workforce, professional learning and personal growth for your educators and all key stakeholders, and finally, curriculum instruction and learning. And so right now, we're in the very early stages of that partnership, and we're really working to build our background and knowledge about the landscape in Chappaqua. It's really, really important to us that we deeply understand the current conditions in Chappaqua and your critical needs before we jump headfirst into the work. To launch our partnership formally, we're actually looking forward to joining you on June 23rd for the CHAP Equity Leaders Planning Session, and then again on July 7th to engage with additional district leaders, again, to just really support building that understanding and background for us so that we can ensure that the work that we do with you and as we work shoulder to shoulder with you, that it's tailored to what Chappaqua's specific needs are. So that's a very high level overview. I know we don't have a lot of time this evening, but again, we are very, very excited to partner with you and very much looking forward to continuing the really dynamic work that you've already started in your district. And so looking forward to continuing to engage more.
Tony, do you want to share anything?
I don't think I have anything to add. Like I said, like Kia said, I think she said it all. We're happy to take any questions if necessary, but you know, the one thing I think Kia, we didn't mention is we're going to start with an equity audit, and that's really a good way for us to assess, get our own kind of footing in the district, also just help shine a light on the work that's already been done and really try to path forward for what's to come. So that will be one of the first big deliverables is a report of findings through the equity audit that will really help ground the work and ensure we're all focused on the right stuff. But other than that, Kia said it all.
I just would like to share from the beginning that the Board of Education and the administrative team has been involved in the interview process and the selection of the RFP recipients tonight. So we would necessarily be the folks that would have questions for you, since we've already had the experience with interacting with you around your work. I just would share that we're really excited to begin our work with you. We are super impressed by your approach, and we are grateful that you'll begin with an equity audit, and then we anticipate that once that audit is complete, we'll be sharing what you learned at a public meeting, and then our approach moving forward. Also, one of the first experiences that the Insight team will have with our Board of Education and our administration is our leadership retreat, the LOP. So that's where we'll begin our work collectively together as a team, and we're really excited.
I would just add to what Christine said by just saying welcome, welcome to our district. We are thrilled to have you. We've been waiting for quite some time to have you come on, and everyone's looking forward to doing the work. We've been highly motivated, and I have to commend our administration for a very thorough year, starting, I wouldn't say from scratch, but starting with a very, very focused intention of starting this work. And so, you know, without further ado, we should get started, and I look forward to joining you on July 7th at the LOP.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say to the community out there that, you know, we got to interview a number of responders to the RFP and allow all were qualified, you know, in the work of diversity and inclusion, not all had the really deep educational expertise that Insight has. And so I'm really excited to partner with a group that not only understands the work surrounding equity and inclusion and diversity, but really has such deep and extensive K-12 public education experience, because I think they not only understand the subject matter we're dealing with, but also teaching and learning and what schools feel like and how we operate. And I think it's going to be a really great partnership, and I'm really excited.
I was just going to say as well that I don't remember what everyone said, but I did want, I think it's very important for our community to know that it really was a rigorous process, that we did get to spend a good amount of time with you and other people that had put in, you know, had responded to our RFP. And we were just really impressed by, you know, top to bottom, your approach to this, your knowledge, your skill set, and just seeming to have a real understanding of how we work here, how education works, what's really important to us with this whole process. And we all feel really excited to start the work with you. We really appreciate it, and hoping you know that we're really excited to work with you. So thank you.
Thank you. This is really important work. We're really eager to engage, and we appreciate the, we appreciate the opportunity as well.
Yes, for sure. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, and that is the end of our strategic planning update. So we'll transition into the community update now. So David, if you could prepare that presentation, and then does the board have any questions about anything that we presented related to the strategic plan? A lot of the work that we've shared with you is summary work that we've been talking about all year. So we look forward to building on what we've done over the course of the pandemic into the next school year. And I just would like to express my gratitude to our team up here, who's been able to continue addressing our strategic plan and our priority areas in the midst of this public health crisis. And so for that, I'm grateful.
I just want to say I noted handwriting without tears, and I have to say that that's the only thing that worked for my son. Well, over 20 years ago, 25 years ago, no one was really using it at the schools, and I used it with him, and he wanted to write.
I think a lot of us wish that our kids would come back. So it's really fantastic thing, and we've had it 25 years ago, but it's fantastic. So I'm glad, I was surprised to see it.
You said the community education, right? Adult education.
And I agree. I just, you know, I look at that presentation with the strategic planning, and we see the hard work that every one of you across from us has put in this year, and that we've managed to move forward with this really important agenda that touches so many bases. And I'm still amazed how you did all this in the midst of what we were dealing with this year. So we're all just really incredibly grateful, so thank you.
I do have one quick question, which is, we rolled out so many incredible new spaces, and in accordance with the strategic plan, I know there's been so much sort of professional development that's gone into how to best utilize those spaces for teaching and learning. And then we had a pandemic, and they weren't used in any of the ways they were originally intended. And so I was wondering sort of what's the, this sort of PD rollout plan as we emerge from COVID into all of these new exciting spaces?
So the good news is that a lot of the work that we had done around flexible furniture and flexible seating paid dividends as we asked teachers to teach in like not traditional spaces, as they were in cafeterias and gymnasiums, and some of that, I think that skill set in order to see a space and arrange furniture in a way that's different, and then maximize that arrangement that looked like really paid off at every level. And some spaces were more challenging than others, because the teachers did an incredible job in these spaces to make them, make them work first students in the technology department, and you know, deserves quite a bit of credit for putting technology into spaces that were never designed to have the kind of technology that we had to put in before using them as instructional spaces. So with that as a little bit of backstory, it was very sad for me to see as somebody that gets really excited about how instructional space interfaces with learning experiences for kids, and all of our work in building instructional spaces that amplify collaboration of students, and students being able to cluster together and collaborate on a whiteboard or a whiteboard surface table. So the sad part was in August and September, when we had these beautiful spaces like Upper Ellen, all of a sudden they were, we took out all the flexible furniture and we put in the old desks, and they were all lined up and they were all facing forwards. The really neat thing was that the faculty was able to use technology to get kids to continue to collaborate and work together, create projects, and cluster together and break out from the technology that was put in the, you know, in the space. With that said, now in many of our spaces, we're back, so we really, for example, we put the new furniture back into the spaces and pulled the desks back out, and so we've been able to make, you know, sort of make that transition. We do have some plans over the summer to revisit our focus on STEAM, for example, at the middle school STEAM centers, we're going to be opening up the high school STEAM centers. We continue to work with the sustainability learning team, where we have a team of eight block teachers and leaders that are brainstorming like sustainability curriculum, so we're ready to open the sustainability center here, really. So we've got a lot going in that way, but the good news is that, you know, teachers were continuing to work on that kind of creativity around getting students to collaborate and create authentic products, and be able to present with each other, and those kinds of things. So I don't think we're going to miss a beat. I think we'll get back to putting in the, putting in the old new furniture, so, you know, we can go back to the instructional activities. And it's going to be neat to use, continue to use the technology in combination with the new instructional spaces to see all that comes together. It's the disruptive pandemic with really a springboard in a lot of ways when it comes to teaching and learning. So I'll just see how the follow those, but the PD can certainly get to jump in, as I know the building leaders are as well.
I did want to say something about that, I have my question, Hillary, and as I was listening to you talk, Adam, I was reminded of the fact of how that work started. And, you know, the bomb was in place sixteen, but that work started like 10 years before or so. And I think that we were able to do that, and our teachers were able to continue having the kids focus on those skills despite the difficulty of using the space, because the focus was initially not on the space. We've seen other places focus on the spaces, and then the teachers get in the spaces, and they're like, well, what do we do now? And they continue to do the same way. But before we designed these spaces, we focused on the curriculum and thought about, you know, what do we want these kids to learn? What are the competencies that are required for the 21st century so that they can compete globally? And it's not just learning content knowledge, it's all of these skills that we've all talked about. And so I think that that, because that was under discussion for such a long time, and the background was such a focus, that they kept at it. They just kept at it, and the space is, although we spent a lot of money on the space, and the space is meant to amplify the purpose of the curriculum, the purpose hits out, and someone's talking about, I guess we did it, we did it, we did it. And that's really the beauty of that.
Can I add something, Vicky?
Yes, yes.
That, you know, I think what you said is absolutely correct. I think it almost all starts probably around 2014, right? When you get the grant from CFS to build the island.
Even before the
But then we started working on the idea of curriculum, and that just kept expanding into the capital project line, and it just created before. I think it all started probably in 2012, 13, when we built the island, we ran the CFS, and it just expanded from there. So it's not, it just happened overnight. This is where it was affecting the process.
All right, thank you. All right, David, you ready? All right, this is bittersweet for me. Here it is. This is what I'd like to say over to you, slide. I'd like to thank everyone, the community, the staff, and especially the Board of Education. We have been open since day one, and this was an incredible, incredible amount of work and dedication and support from everyone in order to make this happen. So I just want to express my gratitude as a superintendent, to all of our parents out there who supported us in August when we knew we needed to open our doors for our students on the first day of school. I want to thank the administrative team for working so hard to make the logistics happen. I want to thank our staff who came to work and came to work every day in incredible conditions to make sure that they were there to help support our students in their morning. And then I want to especially, thanking the Board of Education, who were unpaid volunteers who had to help a team navigate an unprecedented public health crisis. And you know what? I think we did a pretty good job. So I just want to take this moment to acknowledge the five of you for helping us open and stay open for the kids of this district every day in the 2020, 2021 school year. So we're going to applaud you. Because that little four-year-old that popped out of that car and morning grew up on that first day of September, I will never forget that, and that would have never happened if we didn't have you. So thank you so much.
So, and my back to you, Christine, because truly your determination with the entire administration, John, everyone can pick me up at the tail end, but I'm sure you had your own initiatives there, Tony. And I just want to thank everybody with the continuity of learning plan. It was so thorough, and then everyone, all our staff, the custodians, and the nurses, and all the support staff, really the administration, faculty, and staff, all made it happen.
All right. So appreciate that. Okay, so we, these are our quarantine numbers. We don't have anyone in quarantine. This is great. So the whole news tonight, do you have anyone quarantining? We're in each shape. We don't have an update on the world burning. I'm not clear who's making that decision now based on what the governor has put out, but our community can rest assured, as soon as we have new information, we will share that out with our families. I don't anticipate us having a run in the fall at this point, but if something changes or we get a definitive answer on that, I will certainly let our families know. But as you can see, most of our elementary students are in, so I think as we head towards September, more and more people will be comfortable sending their kids back to school. Tony, we have a big appointment tonight on the agenda, and we're really excited about it.
So excited. This is, this picture there, Jeff Purvis, who's not here tonight, he's called to be here, he'll be here in September. He is, we're excited to recommend him to the Board of Education as our new Director of Athletic Experience and Education Health. I want to thank Jason, Simo, and congratulate him, he's been coming out to a position closer to home. But in the meantime, we're excited to welcome Jeff. Jeff's been through a rigorous process in the last six weeks or so. I laugh because he just happens so bad. He went from, you know, posting to finalist pretty quickly, several rounds of interviews and writing tasks, and just, this is, if you mean from the references that I've checked, he just exudes passion, enthusiasm, positivity, and who is born to be an educator and a leader who packs a morale of not only the building that he works in, but also the entire athletics program, the students and the kids. I can, in all the years that I've been checking references, I've never heard what I've heard about this individual, that's what I can tell you. And it was so impactful to me, and my communication with Jeff, I get to say that it comes through very clearly that he is this person who centers kids. He is this person that is incredibly passionate about the work that he does as an educator, and specifically with students at athletics. And we are just really excited to welcome him aboard and have him build on the existing athletics program and health as well.
Tony, can I ask you a question? When did he start?
He is going to start July 1st, September.
I believe it's September.
Does it say September?
No, when you said September.
Oh, sorry.
July 1st.
July 1st is when he started, yes, I apologize. And we're hoping to allow for some time for him to connect with Jason as well before he leaves, so that there will be transition.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you for leading that search, and Thank you, Tony, and thank you for leading that search and having Jeff be in place and he started on the first of July. It was really important. Thank you so much. I was the athletic director and I wasn't something. Okay. And then Adam, do you want to just share some information on Dr. Lemon's, should we welcome him on our retreat?
Sure. So Dr., our hope is to have Dr. Lemon to join us on July 6th to help us with some leadership development. I experienced a keynote from Dr. Lemon at the Tri-State's Leadership Conference that they had and I was really impressed with the way he talked about organizational change, school change, and how the pandemic has impacted some of the moves that leaders should be thinking about as we open up schools in September. So I reached out to him to see if he might be available when we have our administrative retreat and it happened so that he was. So Dr. Ackerman and I actually met with him, I think it was last week, right? Where we had kind of a short interview and a conversation, filling him in on some of the work that we've done this year with future visioning and how we might leverage the pandemic as an opportunity to propel some initiatives forward for the fall. And we really have that meeting with even greater confidence that he'll be a good pick for us to go work with the leadership team and the Board of Education on July 6th as part of our leadership retreat, which will be here on campus.
I want to share this graduation tomorrow night. We've got some updates yesterday from the Department of Health. We keep adjusting, but we're really excited. I think it's going to be a tremendous event tomorrow night for our families and for our graduates. I want to thank Andrew Fercilia and Ron Hannah and Joe Grumondo for organizing all the logistics associated with this. And it'll be streaming live from our website, so if anyone would like to watch it, we will be in a cut, so be welcome to do that. But we're really excited, we're looking forward to celebrating our really graduates on Friday evening under the lights on the contest field. And then I want to acknowledge our elementary, middle school principals because they ran their moving up ceremonies yesterday and many of us had the opportunity to go and attend them. I was there as a parent, as was this little bit of sweet, but they were fantastic. I don't know if we'll ever do them in Florida again, I have to tell you. They were great, they were small, but they were, I think intimate ceremonies were, I think because of the dynamic of what's been going on within our community due to the pandemic, but also the structure and the care that went into those events from our principals, lighter than love by the PTA. I think they turned out to be fantastic events for our families to really honor our students in a safe and appropriate way. And I know that I really appreciated it, sitting outdoors at Seven Bridges and listening to speeches from kids and from principals and then watching my family acknowledge. So I just want to acknowledge our principals because that was a tremendous amount of work to put on my head for reference. And that is the end of the superintendent committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christine. Anyone have any questions on this last superintendent of the year? No, it's been a tremendous year and again, we've said it already, but so grateful. Thank you. Okay, now we will move to committee reports. I don't think I have any reports from my committee. We made those reports at the last meeting and I think those were, as far as committees that are involved in, those were, we reported on the last meetings for those committees. So we're looking towards next year. Does anyone else have anything else to report on committee? Warren?
I got a bunch. So from the audit committee, every year before the external auditors start their audit in July, they always ask the board member to come in and ask questions of the board member to see if they have anything specific. And I did that last week on behalf of the board. So it was a very tentative conversation, but I did that. Regarding facilities, so on behalf of the board and Holly and I, I was leaving for some of this committee, but Holly and me, first, if you asked me in August to take a bet, I would have looked and be, our schools have been closed every Christmas, December. Seems like dog and cat years, seems like we've been working like seven years in one year. But that said, one of the only districts that I know of that's been open all year that Christine mentioned before, and stuff due to a lot of hard work by many individuals, a lot here at the table, John, Ellen, Tony, Adam, Josh Kolb, all the directors and their staffs, of course Christine for leading the effort. So we'd like to call in, I'd like to connect the facilities team in particular, Joe Grumondo and Jimmy from the district level and all the custodial and field staff from each of the buildings to keep our schools open. We wouldn't have been able to do it without them. COVID just sort of took a big hit at everyone and maybe those guys worked tremendous to keep our buildings open. You know, I think it started last summer. Joe and John started with meetings probably in July and August and Holly and I attended many meetings to determine what we were going to do. Could we have different filters in the building for airflow? Could we, there were different ways we could block things off with plexiglass. So it didn't just start in August 1st, it started way before that. But Joe and John here every day working on that and Joe's staff. The other thing is, as Christine mentioned, the, our guidance, I'm getting the state, was not exactly always that crisp and clear and timely. So despite the fact that sometimes we need guidance the day before, this facilities team was extremely flexible in everything they did all through the year and it shows. I mean, if you go out, if you've seen the competition field, I went over there today to take a look and it looks great. And again, facilities committee, facilities, not committee, facilities team, Joe and his team, Jimmy, they put together an unbelievable field for tomorrow's graduation. So the class of 2021 will have a memorable graduation despite COVID, despite all the hardships this year. So on behalf of Holly and I and the Board of Education, we would like to thank the facilities team. That's it.
Yes. Do note that, thank you. Anyone else with a liaison committee report? And now we are in public comment period. We welcome public comments and we ask that you put your comments to three minutes in respect of each other's time. And board members may contact us via email or by phone. And after the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion on themselves regarding the comments presented. Please talk to the microphone and identify yourself. Kelly.
It's Kelly. We need to thank Kelly from this year.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly Mofield and I am the outgoing president of the Chicago PTA. And this is perhaps my last public comment as president. And so I'm pleased to be here with you. And I have a few things written down. One, I would like to echo everything the board and administration said about Holly. Thank you very much, Holly, for your service on the board event. The PTA thanks you for your dedication to the students and the community and our community generally. And we really appreciate you serving and also all of your service to the PTA over the years from the first day you got here. I think you came in and became vice chair at Roaringbrook like two days later, right? So she, Holly, hit the ground running and it's not going to stop for a long time, I don't think. She's going to keep running. And so we really appreciate it, Holly, and good luck with anything else and thank you for that. Second, I wanted to say that the diversity and race and broadly participation committee tonight, I very sadly was not able to attend because I was committed to an event here at Greeley, but they had their first ever district-wide meetup. You know, they've been having meetups by school and tonight they had a social meetup for parents and families and it was at Getty Park. And I got a text message a few minutes ago that there were more than 250 people there. And there was food and music and artists who were doing Ahena painting and there was volleyball and everyone had a really, really wonderful time. My phone has been buzzing with people telling me that it was one of the most diverse settings and groups events that they had ever done, ever. And so I just want to say, wow, what a great thing that has come from what started off as really bad thing, right? Last May, what a huge transformation we've had in our community. And obviously there's a long way to go always, there's always more work. And, but I just, I mean, I feel like I could cry. It's such a wonderful thing and I'm so happy that everyone in the community was together tonight to enjoy that. I'm sorry I missed it, but I wanted to let you guys know because people were really, really happy tonight and I wanted to share that with you. Since it came in large part from the board event last year, grappling with these issues in May and having the public forums and opportunities, that's what spurred the PTA to start our committee. And that was from your discussions where you opened up and had people call in and zoom in. So I thank you for that a year ago. I also wanted to thank the Joe Grumondo Facilities Committee for everything for graduation because it's going to be wonderful and thank you for changing the plans for graduation tomorrow and pivoting so quickly and for the, a lot of the kids have had rehearsals, first time ever in one year that all 313 graduates were in one place up here in the courtyard and it was amazing. And so thank you to Mr. Fercilia, Mr. Dr. Hannah and Dr. Ackerman for letting all of that happen and coordinating. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience? Missing someone in the corner over there. I don't see anyone else. Hold on, I'll take the opportunity for our board protocol to make comments after public comments. And I want to take this opportunity, Kelly, to thank you so much for your year as PTA president. I know how time-consuming you work. It may be just as much as we do. And I say that as a past PTA president. I know what it is to oversee so many volunteers and I just want to say you've done an amazing job this year and the creation of the diversity committees was absolutely fantastic. So I want to thank you as well. And thank you for recognizing that all this work came about from the forum that we had and people do refer to that meeting. We had over 500 people and I just wanted to say that that was very intentional on our part that that meeting didn't happen by accident. We very intentionally wanted to hear from all of those alumni and, you know, I believe that part of what we do and part of leadership is to hear from people. And after you here, you know, you do make changes and that's exactly what we did here. And our administration responded, you know, the board started with a resolution, two resolutions to do the anti-racism work and the form of our parents committee and you piggyback seamlessly onto that and supported our work as well. And we need you as a partner and you provided that partnership. And I cannot thank you enough, Kelly. I know how much work that was. And I also do want to mention the CRE as well on the town side that did a tremendous work. So we are all in this together. And I also want to recognize that as PTA president, I particularly appreciated that you commented at every meeting and gave us feedback on the work we're doing and feedback on what you're doing. And I think that's a great model for us because it's important for the board to hear from your end because you represent the community in the same way that the board does. So I really appreciate your willingness to come. And I want to recognize Kelly for coming to every meeting in person, you know, and she's often, most of the time, the only person in the audience and wearing a mask and you have been here every single, almost every single year. So you deserve, I wish I had a certificate of recognition for you, but thank you so much and we very much look forward to Peggy Machado coming up and look forward to working with Peggy. I know that she'll be terrific PTA president as well. We hope you're staying up with us. You can still come to our meetings, it's okay. Look forward to seeing you. Okay. So let's see that. We will move on in our agenda. And I'd like to get to item 3.1. May I have a motion to accept the minutes of the June 8, 2021 board meeting? Item second. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor, please say aye.
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I will move item 4.1 instructional as presented. Hang on a second.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tony. There's a lot on there. Two in your office. I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I will move item 4.2 non-instructional as presented. Hang on a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right to go to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is, consists of items 5.1 through, let's see, 5.16. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda before we continue? Okay. Consent agenda consists of CIC summaries recorded on June 17th for the 2020-21 school year, CIC summaries reported in March on June 17th for the 2021-22 school year, a supplemental memorandum of agreement with the CBT, and resolutions to certify evaluators, bid award recommendation, a resolution to increase, approving a district which, items which are no longer used or necessary, and a resolution to increase the sick compensated absence budget line, an agreement for provision of special education program, approval of the purchase order increase, approval of budget payment evaluation agreement, approval of the budget transfer, bid award recommendation that was shown in Mrs. McKinnon's presentation for the equitable treatment of anti-racism professional learning, and contracts in relation to the Sustainability Research Center at Forest Greeley High School. Would anyone like to discuss any of these items? And I know that some of them were discussed by our superintendent, Major West. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
You mean to move it?
We didn't move it.
I didn't move it.
Did I not move the consent agenda? Okay, you have a motion to, motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now we'll move on to item 6, which is the acknowledgement of contracts approved by the superintendent for Board Policy 1685. We have, I'll take the two items together. Item 6.1 is an agreement for services with Michael Booley-Glass for science research consulting for the next one year and agreement for services with Dr. Richard Bunnings for professional development work on July 6, 2021. They have a motion to approve items 6.1 and 6.2. You have a second?
Okay.
Any questions or discussion on these items? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And your report on facilities, item 7?
I think you did, you did report on facilities this time.
And I'd like to take, I'd like to move items 8.1 and 8.2. We have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the claims auditors report for May 2021 and acknowledge the receipt of the treasures report for May 2021. You have a motion and second?
I'll move 8.1.
You have a second? Okay, I'll second. Any questions on the financials? Comments or questions? No? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right then, notice of future meetings. Notice of future meetings. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, July 7th, 2021 at 7:30 PM. That will be our reorganization meeting. And so far, scheduled for Forest Welling High School Auditorium.
Right, and we also put a time in because we did agree on the last meeting what the time of the meeting should be moving forward. So we made a decision to place 7:30 on the agenda and if you want to change it, we can do that. We needed to do something.
And the meeting following that will be Wednesday, August 11th at 7:30 PM, which will be our tax warrant. And as of now, it will be at Forest Welling High School Auditorium, but there may be a time when you go back to the public comments to put. So for now, we are noticing it for horse and we will have time to change. And now we have a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Yeah.
We have. And item second.
Injections?
Yes. Please, she just did here in my hallway, this is her last meeting. So let's just not.
Let's just wait a while.
Bittersweet. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.